Okay. A quorum being present, this special town meeting will come to order. The warrant for this special town meeting was signed with the Board of Selectmen on May 26, 2015. The warrant is posted on the town's official website pursuant to the town's general bylaws, and the warrant was posted by Constable John Parr on June 1st, 2015. Therefore, I declare that the requirements of Chapter 2, Section 3 of the General Bylaws of the Town and Chapter 39, Section 10 of the Massachusetts General Bylaws have been satisfied. Tonight, I have myself and the town clerk have appointed the following as tellers for this town meeting. On the left side, Rick Velez; right side, Joanne Upham; center, front end stage, Cindy Dow. All of the above have been sworn in by the town clerk. This meeting will be operated in accordance with the Massachusetts General Bylaws, the town's general bylaws, and by precedent of prior town meetings. While the town bylaws address some of the parliamentary procedures, prior town meetings have relied upon the volume town meeting time as a standard for conduct at Lakeville town meetings. It is my intention to continue that precedent. You will note that two microphones have been positioned in each of the two aisles. I ask that if you seek recognition from the moderator, you go to one of the two microphones. You must be in a microphone to be recognized by the moderator. When recognized by the moderator, please state your name. If you would like to identify your address, please feel free to do so. If you have a motion, please have it prepared in writing. And after stating your motion, please present it to the moderator so that the clerk will have it as part of the official record of this meeting. Unlike many towns, we have no standard relative to the length of time someone can speak. Generally, it has not been an issue. However, I will exercise my prerogatives to keep the meeting moving if I find that a speaker repeats the same points that he or she has raised. A few words on behavior. Shouting from seats, booing and cheering individual speakers cannot be permitted. Any member who interrupts the town meeting in unacceptable ways will be escorted out. Such a member may not return. Do not lose your vote. Please stick to acceptable town meeting behavior. As has been past practice, I will allow the maker of the motion opportunity to speak on the motion before recognizing anyone else. After the maker of the motion has had an opportunity to speak, I will seek the recommendation of the Finance Committee. Then, any other registered voter may speak on the article in question. When the motion comes to a vote, I will ask that you hold up the pink or yellow cards that were issued to each registered voter when you arrived this evening and were checked in. During the voting, if I can easily determine the quantum of vote, I will ask you to lower your cards. However, if there is a counted vote, I will ask that you to hold up your voting card and keep it elevated so that the teller can see it and count the votes in your section. Use of the voting card will assure that only the votes of registered eligible voters are counted. Your voting card has a yes and a no printed on it. This printed, this is printed in case we have a ballot vote. We may not use it as a ballot, but we have it there just in case. Do not lose your voting card. You cannot get another one this evening. A few words about motions to reconsider and or rescind. A motion to reconsider can only be made by one who voted on the prevailing side. A motion to reconsider is acceptable only if new information has come to light that might have caused members to vote otherwise had the information been available earlier. A motion to reconsider is not acceptable simply because many people have left. It is a parliamentary ploy and will not be allowed. A motion to reconsider must pass by a two-thirds vote by Lakeville bylaw. By past town tradition, a motion to reconsider an article can only be made once. I would like to remind you that no food or drink is permitted in the auditorium. Before we begin this special town meeting, I'd like to call your attention to those residents of Lakeville who were active in town government and who have passed away since our last town meeting. The following names I would like to call. Barbara J. Mann. She was election poll worker from 1990 to 2008. Dorothy M. Marville. Board Counsel on Aging from 2010 to 2013. Pauline T. Bach. Public Health Nurse from 1973 to 1988. And Walter A. Egger. Plumbing Inspector from 1964 to 2004 and Assistant Gas Inspector from 1992 to 1995. Please stand while I ask for a moment of silence in their memory, and please remain standing after the moment of silence and honor our country by saluting the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
United States of America. And to the brother for which it stands, one nation under God, ended as with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Finally, I'd like to introduce those of us on the stage. My name is Norman Oral. I am the moderator. To my immediate left is Lillian Drain, Town Clerk; Rita Garbutt, Town Administrator; Greg Corbo, our Town Council for tonight; Aaron Burke, Selectmen; Mitzi Hollenbeck, Selectmen; John Powerly, Selectmen; Mike Petruzzo, Finance Committee; Joseph Fleming, Finance Committee; George Belhopolis, Finance Committee; almost; Maureen Candido, Finance Committee; and finally Cindy McCray on the end, our Town Accountant. Does anyone require a copy of the town warrant? Do you all have a copy? If you, if you do not have a copy, I ask you to raise your hand, and one of the tellers will get you one. I see a couple of hands for the town warrant. Could one of the tellers grab some town? All right, we'll get those out in a minute. All right, so if you can put your hands up again, those that needed them. Okay. Everyone has one now? Now that we have, all have a copy of the warrant, I would seek a motion to waive the reading of the warrant. Do I have a second? I have a motion, a second. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. I would also like to draw your attention and ask your approval for the following non-registered voters to speak tonight on various issues if they are called upon. We have Greg Corbo, again, our Town Council that's up here; Richard Mederos, our Superintendent of Schools; Bill Abrinson, Standard Times; and Jeremy Peck, the Superintendent of Streets. I would entertain a motion to approve the, those non-residents to speak. Second? All those in favor, please raise your cards. Any opposed? You can put them down. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And with that, I would entertain a motion for Article 1.
Hello, everyone. My name is Aaron Burke, and I move that the town vote to transfer and/or appropriate from available funds certain sums of money in order to defray unanticipated costs for the fiscal year 2015 from various accounts in the General Fund and the Water Enterprise Account, all set forth on the document entitled Article Number 1 Special Town Meeting Transfers, June 15, 2015.
Thank you. Do I have a second? I have a motion, a second. Would you like to speak to this, Mr. Burke? You can send a copy down if you want.
This is some financial housekeeping issues and also to close out our snow and ice deficit from the previous winter.
Okay, thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation? Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from the audience? Any, any further discussion on this article? Seeing no one rise, this is a two-thirds required vote as it takes money out of stabilization account. So, I'm going to do a hand count, if the tellers can do that, just because we will need a hand count for a two-thirds vote unless it's unanimous. So let's do a hand count on this, if you could, tellers. So, all those in favor of Article 1, please raise your cards, and please keep them there while you're counted. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. You may put your cards down. Any opposed to Article 1, please raise your cards. And tellers, could you count? All right, thank you. The motion carries by a two-thirds required. Thank you very much. I'd entertain a motion for Article 2.
For Article 2, I move that the town vote to postpone this matter indefinitely.
Do I have a second? Would you like to speak to the article as far as what your motion has been?
I will. So this article was related to the Governor's 9C cuts, which occurred in November of 2014, related to regional transportation. We have not yet received the final figures for the school district for regional transportation reimbursement from the state. The final check is to be cut by the end of June to be reimbursed to the school district. So therefore, we are voting to postpone this matter indefinitely with the intention, as we had discussed at our special town meeting in the fall, that any changes in the regional transportation would be addressed at a future town meeting, and we will be bringing this back up at the special town meeting in the fall.
All right, thank you. And I would ask, could you send a copy of the motion as read down to the town clerk? And in the meantime, does the Finance Committee have a recommendation? Okay, thank you. Are there any further discussion on this? Seeing no one rising, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. All those opposed to the motion, please raise your cards. I see none, and motion carries unanimously. I would entertain a motion for Article 3.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the vote taken under Article 3 of the November 17, 2014 special town meeting, which authorized the Board of Selectmen to petition the General Court for special legislation permitting the town to dispose of parcels of land described in the vote to the City of Taunton for water supply and related purposes for telecommunications facility support. To instead authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the General Court for special legislation permitting the town to dispose of said parcels to the City of Taunton for general municipal purposes and for telecommunications facility support.
Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Would you like to speak to the motion?
We are in the process of selling our water tower to Taunton, and one of the, one aspect of that when we had made that original, or passed that original motion here at town meeting last November was, would, because it was for water purposes, it required DEP oversight, and by adjusting this, it takes away that need. So that's why we're asking that you support it.
Thank you. And could you have a copy for the town clerk? And Finance Committee? Okay, thank you. Finance Committee, you have a recommendation?
Yes, we do recommend approval.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this motion? Yes, sir.
Hi. Bob Marshall from Barcel Street. Aaron, why would we not want DEP oversight other than the canceling out the paperwork?
Well, it's my understanding that that's, that's really a big part of this, is the, the DEP oversight adds a whole layer of complexity to the transaction that, quite frankly, the City of Taunton wasn't interested in. So that's a piece of it. Actually, Town Council can also add, add more to that.
Thank you. Through you, Ms. Moderator. Yeah, so by, by restricting the use of the property by statute to water supply purposes, it actually does two things. Not only does it add this additional layer of complexity to go through a DEP permitting process, but it also puts it into what's known as Article 97 land, which is a, a provision of the Massachusetts Constitution, which restricts what can be done with certain types of conservation land after it's been designated like that. So the concern here is that if the property was ever going to have a change in, in purpose, it would be virtually impossible to do that. And so what we intend to do is to work with Taunton to limit the use of the property contractually, but if we, there ever is a need for us to get the property back, we won't have to go through those additional layers of complexity if we want to get the property back and use it for something else.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
A couple of things. First of all, this is the first I'm hearing that we would ever want to get the, the think back. If, is that under consideration, that we want to maybe at some point in the future get this property back? Has there been any discussion about possibly wanting that? Okay. The second point, and I don't mean to make this more complicated, but it seems to me that DEP oversight may provide us with some protections. Is that the case or not?
I personally disagree with that, but...
Well, I don't, I don't know that any that there, there would be, but I'm just asking the question. Does it provide us with...
I don't get town water from Taunton, though, so...
I do.
I know. (laughing). I'm not, I'm not qualified to answer that question, honestly.
Is there anybody here who is?
Let me ask. Could you restate the question just so...
Well, are there any protections that DEP oversight would provide us that we will be losing if we do this?
By, by this motion. Does anyone?
Through you, Ms. Moderator?
Yes.
I'm not aware of any additional benefits that the town would get as a result of that DEP oversight. And really, from our perspective, what we've seen is all it's doing at this point is sort of driving Taunton to take it, take a step back. And so what we're trying to do is make it a little bit simpler by taking away what we really feel is an unnecessary additional layer of bureaucracy there.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
I wanted to direct this question to Town Council. The question is, and I'm probably going to support this, but is this something that Town Council should have been aware of beforehand?
Is there an ability to answer that question? And I think, and I think the gist of it is, when we did the original motion last November, was this considered or? I don't know if that's, if you're able to answer that question, but...
Thank you. Through you, Ms. Moderator. Now, this is something that came up as a result of the process of going through to the legislature. It often happens, you submit special legislation to the legislature, and then they, they come back with issues that they want to see addressed. And this issue of DEP oversight was one of the issues that came up in the course of that process. There was really no way for us to know that ahead of time.
Well, Mr. Moderator...
Just to add to that, the process of developing the initial motion was done with Town Council and the city solicitor of Taunton, and it didn't, they didn't necessarily contemplate this being an issue at the time.
If I may, excuse me, Mr. Moderator, isn't this something that experienced municipal council should have been aware of?
I think unfortunately, that's a question that can't be answered by anyone. Because I think it's an opinion or possibly a, the form of a question that is subjective, I guess I would say.
Well, in final comment, I mean, we're here and we've got to do what we've got to do.
Yes. Thank you. Any further discussion on this motion? Seeing no one come to the microphone, this is a majority vote required, so all those in favor of this motion, please raise your cards. Thank you. You can put them down. All opposed to this article? Oh, that's okay. You can put your cards down. Thank you. Motion carries by majority vote. Thank you very much. With that, I would entertain a motion for Article 4.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
I move that town vote to accept Woodland Ridge Drive as a town way, as heretofore laid out by the Board of Selectmen and to authorize the Selectmen to acquire by gift, purchase, or eminent domain an easement or fee simple in the way, and any related easements as shown on the road layout entitled Roadway as Built, Accepted Plan Woodland Ridge Subdivision in Lakeville, Mass., dated October 30th, 2014, prepared by Outback Engineering, a copy of which is on file with the town clerk.
Do I have a second? I have a motion, a second. Thank you. Would you care to speak to this article?
Most certainly, Mr. Moderator. A vote was taken at last town meeting to approve this and to accept it as a town way. It was not filed at the Registry of Deeds by the attorney who represented the owner, and we're just presenting it again. The work has been done. It's been completed. It's been, the as-built's been submitted. And at the, the planning board, we voted to approve this again, and it's just more or less a housekeeping issue. So that's all there is.
All right, thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
We do, Mr. Moderator. We do recommend approving this article.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on this article? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 4, please raise your cards. This is a majority vote. Thank you. You may put them down. All those opposed to Article 4, please raise your cards. Seeing none, I deem it vote, vote passes unanimously. I would entertain a motion for Article 5.
Mr. Moderator? I move that the town vote to accept Village Road as a town way, as heretofore laid out by the Board of Selectmen and to authorize the Selectmen to acquire by gift, purchase, or eminent domain an easement or fee simple in the way, and any related easements as shown on the road layout plan entitled Roadway as Built, Acceptance Plan, Woodland Ridge Subdivision in Lakeville, Mass., dated October 30th, 2014, prepared by Outback Engineering, a copy of which is on file with the town clerk.
Thank you. Do I have a second? And would you care to speak to this motion?
Yes, this is part of the same subdivision. It's the adjacent road to, to the other road. And same thing. It was, it was voted and approved. The work was completed, and we just want to get this passed as well.
Okay, great. And now we'll, we'll take a copy now. While the Finance Committee, do you have a recommendation? Thank you. Are there any further discussion on this article? Seeing no one rise, this is a majority vote. Also, all those in favor of Article 5, please raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. All those opposed to Article 5, please raise your cards. Seeing none, I deem that the vote passes unanimously. And with that, I would entertain a motion to dissolve the special town meeting. Do I have a second? Motion, a second. All those in favor of dissolving, please raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. Any opposed? I see none. Motion carries unanimously. So on to the annual town meeting. In a quorum being present, this annual town meeting will come to order. The warrant for this annual town meeting was signed by the Board of Selectmen on May 26, 2015. The warrant is posted on the town's official website pursuant to the town's general bylaws, and the warrant was posted by the Constable John Parr on June 1st, 2015. Therefore, I declare that the requirements of Chapter 2, Section 3 of the General Bylaws of the Town and Chapter 39, Section 10 of the Massachusetts General Laws have been satisfied. Again, we'll be having the same assistant tellers with, again, Rick Velez on the left side, Joanne Upham on the right side, and Cindy Dow for the center and right stage. This meeting will be operated in accordance with the Massachusetts General Bylaws, the Town General Bylaws, and by precedent of prior town meetings. While the town bylaws address some of the parliamentary procedures, prior town meetings have relied upon the volume town meeting time as a standard for conduct at Lakeville town meetings. It is my intention to continue this precedent. You will note that two microphones have been positioned in each of the two aisles. I ask that if you seek recognition from the moderator, you go to one of the two microphones. You must be in a microphone to be recognized by the moderator. When recognized by the moderator, please state your name. If you'd like to identify your address, please feel free to do so. If you have a motion, please have it prepared in writing, and after stating your motion, please present it to the moderator so that the clerk will have it as part of the official record of this meeting. Unlike many towns, we have no standard relative to the length of time someone can speak. Generally, it's not been an issue. However, I will exercise my prerogatives to keep the meeting moving if I find that the speaker repeats the same points that he or she has raised. Shouting from seats, booing, cheering individual speakers cannot be permitted. Any member who interrupts the town meeting in unacceptable ways will be escorted out. Such a member may not return. Do not lose your vote. Please stick to acceptable town meeting behavior. As has been past practice, I will allow the maker of the motion opportunity to speak on the motion before recognizing anyone else. After the maker of the motion has had an opportunity to speak, I will seek the recommendation of the Finance Committee. Then, any other registered voter may speak on the article in question. And when the motion comes to vote, I'll ask that you hold up the yellow card issued to the H registered voter when you arrived this evening and were checked in. During the voting, if I can easily determine the quantum of the vote, I will ask you to lower your cards. However, if there is a counted vote, I'll ask to hold up the card and keep it elevated so the teller can see it and count it. so the teller can see it and count the votes in your section. The use of the voting card will assure that only the votes of registered eligible voters And motions to reconsider and rescind. A motion to reconsider can only be made when one voted on the prevailing side. A motion to reconsider is acceptable only if a new information has come to light that may have caused members to vote otherwise had the information been available earlier. A motion to reconsider is not acceptable simply because many have left. This is parliamentary ploy and will not be allowed. A motion to reconsider must pass by two-thirds vote by Lakeville bylaw. By past town tradition, a motion to reconsider an article can only be made once. I would like to remind you, no food or drink in the auditorium. And does anyone that's arrived since the special town meeting require a copy of the warrant? If you do, raise your hand. Seems that everyone has, oh, we have one person needing a copy of the annual town meeting If you could raise your hand if you don't have a copy of the annual town meeting warrant, thank you. Now that everyone has a copy, I would seek a motion to waive the reading of the warrant. Do I have a second? I have a motion, a second. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. Any opposed, please raise your cards. Seeing none, motion carries unanimously. And again, I would like to, for the annual town meeting, seek approval for non-residents to speak. Again, those names are Greg Corbo, Town Council, Richard Medeas, Superintendent of Schools, Bill Abramson, Standard Times, and Jeremy Peck, Superintendent of Streets. Do I have a second? Motion, a second. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. All those opposed, please raise your cards. Motion carries unanimously. And with that, I would entertain a motion for Article One of the annual town meeting.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate $150,000, $150,821,000 to pay the salaries of all elected officials.
Could, I just take a moment to ask, is that microphone working?
No.
Yeah. Is, is there anything? Okay.
Try it now. Maybe it's my voice. Try again?
Yes, if you would, I, just to make sure.
Try again? Not working?
Yeah, I think you've got to really be...
That close? Okay. Are you good? I'll try again. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate $150,821,000 to pay the salaries of all elected officials.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Motion is second. Would you like to speak to the motion?
I think it's pretty self apparent, I mean, the elected officials involved, the treasurer and the town clerk, Board of Health, Board of Selectmen, Board of Assessors, and quite frankly, personally, I really appreciate the fact that they do what they do and spend the amount of time that they do on these boards for the compensation that they do receive. It is a stifle.
All right, thank you. If you could send a copy down, and just for the record, the FinCom has a recommendation?
The FinCom does recommend approval.
Thank you. Before I open the floor up to any questions or discussion, what I will do is read the totals of each of the various boards, and if you have a question or anything you would like to say, if you can just say "hold," and I'll make a mark, and then when I get through all of them, you can come to the floor and ask your question. So I'll just read them, and if you have an issue that you want to bring up, say "hold." Selectmen personnel, $5,000. Assessors personnel, $5,000. Board of Health personnel, $5,000. Treasurer and collector personnel, $72,092. And town clerk personnel, $63,729. I did not hear any "holds." If there is any further discussion, please rise now. Seeing none, this is a majority vote. All those in favor of Article One, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. Any opposed to Article One, please raise your card. The vote passes unanimously. Thank you. Article Two.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Since I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate $8,434,239, appropriate $629,141 from free cash, transfer and appropriate $16,515 from the Massachusetts Water Pollution Abatement Trust, transfer and appropriate $71,667,000 from the Debt Service Capital Projects Stabilization Fund, transfer and appropriate $60,000 from PAC retained earnings, appropriate estimated receipts of $157,700 to PAC Enterprise, transfer and appropriate $120,000 from the General Fund Tax Levy to Landfill Enterprise, appropriate estimated receipts of $254,000 to the Landfill Enterprise, transfer and appropriate $224,000 from the General Fund Tax Levy to Water Enterprise, and transfer and appropriate $3,385 from the Water Enterprise retained earnings to defray town expenses for the fiscal period July 1st, 2015 to June 30th, 2016 inclusive.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Motion, a second. Would you care to speak to this article?
It's quite a process to get to this point. I don't have anything specific to speak to it, I mean, I'll wrap them in the numbers and the summaries that you have.
Okay, if you could send a copy of the motion down, and does the FinCom have a recommendation just for the record?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, we do recommend approval.
And once again, what I'll do next is read the totals, and there's quite a few, and again, if you have a question or something you'd like to speak about for that grouping, please yell "hold," and we'll come back to you when I'm done reading them all. So, Selectmen, you would have to come to the microphone.
Can we vote to waive the reading?
You could make a motion to waive the reading.
Can I make a motion to waive the reading?
Do I have a second? Okay, thank you. Is there any discussion on the motion to waive the reading? Okay, that would be, oh, do you have something about the waiving of the reading?
Just, I, I hear what you're saying, I, I understand why it takes up a lot of time, but we're going to be spending millions and millions of dollars, and this is a very cursory over, overview, and I, I think we ought to take at least a few minutes to go over it, just my thinking.
The motion was to waive the reading, not to waive discussion.
That's fine. So we have a motion to waive my reading of the totals. There can still be discussion if you want to bring it up. So, all those in favor of waiving the reading of the totals, please raise your cards. Okay. All those opposed to the waiving. That's pretty close. I'm going to ask the tellers to count just to make sure. If you could, raise your cards again if you are for the motion to waive the reading. Thank you, you may put your cards down. All those opposed to the waiving of the reading, please raise your cards and be counted.
Four.
Moderator, you have to break the tie.
Well, this is unusual, but as moderator, it's my prerogative to vote on a few occasions, one of which is to break a tie. If we double check the numbers, just to make sure that we... Reed, are you going to make the suspense build? Okay, well, I, since I believe in transparency, I am going to vote against the motion to waive the reading, so we will read the totals. Thank you. It was a good little exercise though. So, moving on, Selectmen personnel, $253,126. Selectmen expenses, $16,500. Finance committee expenses, $900. Accounting personnel, $125,729. Accounting expenses, $75,105. Assessors personnel, $139,447. Assessors expenses, $49,705. Treasurer and collector personnel, $176,623. Treasurer and collector expenses, $40,000. Law expenses, $40,000. Wage and personnel board total, $750. Town clerk personnel, $36,254. Town clerk expenses, $2,750. Elections expenses, $15,800. Registration expenses, $10,410. Conservation commission personnel, $32,390. Conservation commission expenses, $1,800. Planning board personnel, zero. Planning board expenses, $150. Appeals board expenses, $300. Historic townhouse expenses, $4,500. Town office and fire station expenses, $295,000. Town reports expenses, $600. Cable TV advisory expenses, $1,000. Other general government expenses, $14,200. Police department personnel, $1,545,054. Police department expenses, $190,050. Fire department personnel, $1,089,538. Fire department expenses, $133,425. Building department personnel, $134,895. Building department expenses, $5,200. Gas inspector expenses, $11,000. Plumbing inspector expenses, $16,500. Sealer weights and measures expenses, $1,600. Electric line inspector expenses, $24,000. Animal inspector expenses, $6,300. Emergency management expenses, $7,700. Animal shelter animal control officer personnel, $82,911. Animal shelter animal control officer expenses, $18,350. Highway department personnel, $493,637. Highway department expenses, $144,240. Snow and ice personnel, $15,000. Snow and ice expenses, $35,000. Street lighting expenses, $20,000. Cemetery service expenses, $12,500. Board of Health personnel, $144,139. Board of Health expenses, $9,914. Board of Health visiting nurse expenses, $2,000. Counsel on Aging personnel, $130,793. Counsel on Aging expenses, $26,015. Veterans benefits personnel, $13,784. Veterans benefits expenses, $151,615. Library personnel, $220,269. Library expenses, $105,200. Total historic library building, $3,500. Historic commission expenses, $450. And moving on to debt. Total debt service of $1,090,247. Regional assessment expense, $1,800. Unemployment expense, $1,000. Total employee benefits, $1,684,412. Total property and liability insurance, $175,000. Park Enterprise personnel, $101,250. Park Enterprise expenses, $116,450. Total Park Enterprise revenue, which shows up as a negative, $217,700. Landfill Transfer Enterprise personnel, $159,341. Landfill Transfer Enterprise expense, $200,659. And landfill transfer cap expense, $14,000. Total landfill enterprise revenues, minus, $374,000 even. Water Enterprise expense, $13,850. Water Enterprise capital improvements, $213,535. Total Water Enterprise revenues, negative again, $227,385. Is there any further discussion on this article? I've heard no "holes," and no one's rising to the microphone. Yes?
Just one quick question, there was, I couldn't get to it fast enough, but it was on the, I think it was the highway department, there was a tremendous decrease from, I think, the previous year. I don't even know what page it was on.
Okay.
And I, I just wondered if there was some explanation as to why the, there was such a decrease.
Okay, would one of the Selectmen, are you familiar with that?
Skip it.
Or Finance Committee?
Yeah, I just need to find the page.
I believe it's on page 12.
12.
A drop from 182 to 144, and it seems with the winters we've been having, I was just curious about that.
So, the question, is there anyone able to discuss the change?
Sure. Some of the changes, really, if you look at them, are in repairs and maintenance, the building and grounds. We have some articles later, or there's an article with the Capital Projects, which you'll find later for $30,000, I believe, for the roof repair, as well as the salt shed. So some of those articles have moved out of the operating budget into the capital expenditures budget.
All right, thank you.
Go ahead, Mike.
Mr. Moderator, I'm sure we need to make a couple of amendments to that singular article.
Okay, so you make a motion to amend the article, and what would that be?
I make a motion to amend the article, and then we read the amended article. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate...
Could you speak up again?
Okay. $8,434,233, appropriate $629,141 from free cash, transfer and appropriate $16,515 from the Massachusetts Water Pollution Abatement Trust, and transfer and appropriate $60,000 from PAC retained earnings, appropriate estimated receipts of $157,700 to PAC Enterprise, transfer and appropriate $120,000 from the General Fund Tax Levy to Landfill Enterprise, appropriate estimated receipts of $254,000 to the Landfill Enterprise, transfer and appropriate $224,000 from the General Fund Tax Levy to Water Enterprise, transfer and appropriate $3,385 from Water Enterprise retained earnings to defray the town expenses for the fiscal period July 1st, 2015 to June 30th, 2016 inclusive.
Thank you. This is, do I have a second to the amendment?
Seven.
Okay, I have a motion, a second, to amend the article, so first we'll need to vote to make this amendment, then if that passes, we'll vote on the final article. So the amendment is a majority vote, but I would entertain any discussion on the amended.
Yeah, what is the change, please?
One minor change in the first figure, the $8,434,000 was originally presented, I believe, as... One minor change in the first figure, the eight million-four-hundred-and-thirty-four-thousand dollars was originally presented, I believe, as eight million-four-thirty-four-two-thirty?
Two-thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine, it was crossed out here. So, the nine-dollar figure went to three dollars.
So, it's a six-dollar decrease.
Six dollars, yes. And the...
Thank you.
The other amendment was, we had taken out the part of the motion that was to transfer and appropriate, seventy-one-thousand-six-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars from debt service capital project stabilization fund. That particular transaction, if you will, is going to be handled in another article.
Okay, any further questions on the amendment? Seeing none, rising. All those in favor of the amend to the motion, please raise your cards. Thank you. May put them down. All those opposed to the amendment to the article, please raise your cards. I see none. The motion to amend passes unanimously. So, we'll go back to voting on this as a final budget amendment, as amended. This will require a two-thirds vote. No more stabilization?
Yes, stabilization.
Thank you. Okay, since we took out a stabilization, it'll be a majority vote. Is there any further discussion on it before I call the vote? Seeing no one rising, all those in favor of the amended Article II, please raise your card. Thank you, you may put them down. All those opposed to Article II, please raise your card. I see none. Motion passes unanimously. Article III.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate for the use of the trustees for the county cooperative extension service the sum of five hundred dollars, and to set the length of the term of the town director at one year, as provided in the Mass. General Laws, Chapter one-twenty-eight, Sections forty-one and forty-two.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Motion a second. Would you care to speak to the motion?
Sure. This is an annual appropriation that we make. It goes to support programs, which in Lakeville in the past years actually encompass the four-H programs, the Plant Science Sunflower Program for grades K through two, the four-H public speaking contests, four-H programs at the Lakeville Public Library, and the four-H embryology program.
Thank you. And if you could send a copy to the town clerk. And Finance Committee, do you have a recommendation?
We do, Mr. Moderator, we do recommend approval of this article.
Thank you. Would anyone from the audience care to discuss this article? Seeing no one rising, this is a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. All those opposed to Article III, please raise your cards. Seeing none, the motion passes unanimously. Article IV.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of nine-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand-six-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars as the share of the town of Lakeville in the Plymouth County Retirement Association.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Motion a second. Would you care to speak to it?
This is the town's share of the Plymouth County Retirement Association.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
The Finance...
The Finance Committee does recommend approving this.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this, Article IV? Seeing none, all those in favor, it's a majority vote, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. All those opposed to Article IV, please raise your cards. I see none, the vote passes unanimously. Article V.
I would ask that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one-million-six-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty dollars as a town's share of two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen maintenance and operating budget for the Old Colony Regional Vocational High School District, consisting of non-excluded debt assessment of one-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand-two-hundred-and-eleven dollars, the operating cost assessment of one-million-three-hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand-six-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars, and the transportation assessment of one-hundred-and-seventy-eight-thousand-four-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars to be used in conjunction with an appropriation for the same purpose by the towns of Acushnet, Carver, Matapoyset, and Rochester.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Would you care to speak to the article? Thank you.
This represents a uptick in the assessment, but it's, this is, I mean, this is the minimum it takes to keep running the same way as we did last year. We're a tier-one school, you know, the things are going well, but some things changed. It's a thirty-nine-year-old building, and we're now starting to pay for a roof we put on two years ago, and we're starting to pay for, this is the first year we're starting to pay for some, as a capital cost, rooftop equipment that was installed, I mean, like, four years ago. The actual percentage of the apples-for-apples argument of, you know, of the same number of teachers and the same number of programs actually only went up one point nine percent. And they're, they're doing well. It's a tier-one school, and we're pretty proud of it. The other, the other reason is it's attracting more Lakeville students each year. We have eight more students this year in addition to the, you know, of the fourteen from last year. So, we're not losing students, we're gaining students. The total's the same, I mean, for the school, but Lakeville's percentage, we're now the second-highest user of the facility.
All right, thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
The Finance Committee does recommend approving this article.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the article? Seeing no one rise, this is a majority vote. All those in favor of Article V, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. All those opposed to Article V, please raise your card. Thank you, vote passes unanimously. Article VI. I would entertain a motion.
Good evening. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twelve-million-three-hundred-and-four-thousand-five-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars as the town's share of the two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen maintenance and operating budget for the Free Town Lakeville Regional School District, consisting of non-excluded debt assessment of forty-nine-thousand-two-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars, the excluded debt assessment of four-hundred-and-ninety, four-hundred-and-fifty-nine-thousand-two-hundred-and-seventy dollars, pardon, the operating cost assessment of eleven-million-three-hundred-five-thousand-three-hundred-and-ten dollars, and the transportation assessment of four-hundred-and-ninety-thousand-seven-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars to be used in conjunction with an appropriation for the same purpose by the town of Free Town.
All right, thank you. Do I have a second? I have a motion, a second. Would you care to speak to your motion?
Mr. Moderator, may I make an amendment to the motion?
First, I would like him to speak to it, and then when we, we'll get into any amendments to it.
Thank you.
As a member of the school committee and the chair of the Regional Finance Subcommittee of SAME, I think that this is a good budget, budget to approve. We've managed to incorporate some things, thanks to the leadership of Superintendent Maduros and Finance Director Fred Baker, such as a five-year capital plan, which we hadn't had before. I think it puts us in a good position for the coming year.
All right, thank you. And if we could have a copy of your motion, as written? Finance Committee, do you have a recommendation on this motion?
We do not have a recommendation on this motion. I would recommend that we listen to the amendment.
Okay, thank you. So, is there a further discussion?
So, Mr. Moderator, I'd like to make an amendment to the motion. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twelve-million-two-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand-nine-hundred-and-fifty dollars as the town's share of the two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen maintenance and operating budget for the Free Town Lakeville Regional School District, consisting of the non-excluded debt assessment of forty-nine-thousand-two-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars, the excluded debt assessment of four-hundred-and-fifty-nine-thousand-two-hundred-and-seventy dollars, the operating cost assessment of eleven-million-three-hundred-five-thousand-three-hundred-and-ten dollars, and the transportation assessment of four-hundred-thousand-one-hundred-and-one dollars to be used in conjunction with an appropriation for the same purpose by the town of Free Town.
So, I have a motion to amend the article. Do I have a second to the amendment? A motion and a second to amend the article. Would you care to speak to your amendment?
I would. We are voting, or we are putting forth the amended motion based upon the House figures coming through for regional transportation reimbursement from the state. This is similar to what was done at the previous town meeting last year, where the reimbursement figures on regional school transportation from the state are coming in higher than what the numbers were given and voted on by the school committee. This is not an unusual occurrence. This is how we decided to operate with this constraint in the current year.
All right, thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to the amendment to the article? I see none rising. Oh, one.
Hi, Louise Richard, Lakeside Ave. My only question is this. Does the superintendent approve these numbers for the regional school committee? Do they approve of the way that we're doing things now? Is this the proper way to do it?
I guess...
I just would like to know if they're backing your numbers.
Okay, I would ask the superintendent if he wants to speak to that question.
Mr. Moderator, absolutely. I almost was refraining until the question came up. I fully support the amended motion as presented. It's consistent. I guess the only thing I would point out is, unlike previous years where the budget was reduced, this is not an actual reduction of the school budget. It simply reflects the fact that with new information, state aid is coming to the district, and as a result, the assessment is adjusted. So, yes, I'm here with school board members and a superintendent. I do support these numbers. Just for, just for point of reference, specific as to why, then, we didn't make the initial motion. Mr. Kulikovich presented the budget as it was voted by the school committee. We will be taking subsequent action on this Wednesday night, if the action of both towns proceeds tonight in support. So, that's the piece. We had to bring that motion initially for them to then amend it, but yes, I'm in full support of this action.
Thank you. Are there any further questions on the amendment? I see none. This is a majority vote. To amend the motion first. All those in favor of amending the motion as stated, please raise your cards. You may put them down. All those opposed to the amendment, please raise your cards. I declare the motion to amend passes unanimously. So, now, we have the article as amended to vote on. Is there any further questions or issues with the final article? I see none. All those in favor of the Article VI as amended, please raise your card. Thank you, you may put them down. Any opposed, please raise your card. See none, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Article VII.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of two-hundred-four-thousand-six-hundred-and-eight dollars for the payment of vocational education tuitions and related transportation for students enrolled in vocational education programs other than at Old Colony Vocational School.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Motion a second. Would you care to speak to it?
I do not. I would recommend.
Is anyone, would anyone care to speak to it? No.
Yes, so this is tuitions for vocational schools other than Old Colony that students from Lakeville attend. It would be Bristol-Aggie, and I think Waymouth Tech is the other one.
All right, thank you. And could we have a copy of the motion as read, Mr. Kulikovich? Thank you. And the Finance Committee, do you have a recommendation?
Yes, the Finance Committee recommends approving this article as presented.
Thank you. Any further questions or discussion on this article? Seeing no one rising, this is a majority vote. All those in favor of Article VII, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. All opposed to Article VII, please raise your cards. I declare the article passes unanimously. Article VIII.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty thousand dollars to cover the cost of contractual obligations upon retirement of town employees.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Would you care to speak to the article?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, if a town employee retires, any accrued vacation time and eligible sick leave buyback will be covered by these funds set aside for this purpose.
Thank you. And if you could send a copy down. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
The Finance Committee does recommend approval.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on this article? I see no one rising. All those in favor, by majority of this article, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. Any opposed to this article, please raise your cards. I declare motion passes unanimously. Article IX.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of fifty thousand dollars for the purpose of adding to the other post-employment benefits liability trust fund under GASB forty-five pursuant to the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter thirty-two B, Section twenty.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Anyone care to speak to?
Yes. So, this is a motion to transfer fifty thousand dollars into a trust fund to pay for other post-employment health insurance benefits for town employees, along with school employees that were prior to regionalization. Currently, as of two thousand and twelve, we have a valuation that's done every three years. As of two thousand and twelve, the unfunded liability is fifteen million dollars and change. So, this is something that we are working on trying to fund over a period of time, which pays for health insurance for retired employees.
Thank you.
And currently, I guess I would say that we've appropriated, since we started doing these transfers, a total of one-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars into the fund.
All right, thank you. And if we could have a copy of the motion as read. And Finance Committee, do you have a recommendation?
The Finance Committee does recommend approving this article, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing no one rise, this is a majority vote. Please raise your cards if you are in favor of Article IX. Thank you. You may put them down. Any opposed to Article IX? I see none. Motion passes unanimously. Article X.
Mr. Moderator, Paul Malidi, Chairman of the Board of Assessors. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of seventeen thousand dollars for the purpose of funding the triennial recertification of the town's real estate and personal property in fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, as mandated by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue, and any costs incidental or related thereto.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Would you care to speak to the issue?
Every three years, the State of Massachusetts requires us to recertify and revalue all the parcels in town. It's a large expense, and this kind of spreads it out over a three-year period.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval.
Is there any further discussion on this article?
Mr. Moderator, can you, I believe there was a typographical error in the reading of the motion, insofar as it should have said, "I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of seventeen thousand dollars." The words "and/or transfer from available funds" should have been omitted.
Then officially, we would need to have a motion to amend. Would someone care to make that motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the words "and/or transfer" be struck from the article as printed.
Thank you. Do I have a second on the amendment? Thank you. Have a motion, a second. Anyone else care to speak to that? I guess I should actually ask the Finance Committee for recommendation on the amendment.
The Finance Committee does recommend approval.
All right, thank you. Seeing no further discussion on this, we're voting to amend the article. All those in favor of amending the article, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. Any opposed to the amendment, raise your card. Amendment passes unanimously. Okay, on to the final article, as amended. All those in favor of Article X, please raise your cards. All those, thank you, you may put them down. All those opposed to Article X as amended, please raise your card. I see none. The final amended article passes unanimously as well. Thank you. Thank you. Article 11.
Mr. Moderator, I think a motion will move, I move that the town vote to transfer and appropriate from the debt service capital project stabilization fund the sum of $71,677, $667,000 for the purpose of funding the fiscal year 2016 principal and interest payments due on the three-year lease for equipment and technology for the town network as authorized at the June 9, 2014 annual town meeting.
Thank you. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Would you care to speak to this article?
Uh, just, just a second and, uh, three payments on the acquisition of some IT infrastructure that we approved of last year.
All right, thank you. And if you could pass down a copy of the motion and for the record, the Finance Committee's recommendation?
The Finance Committee recommends approval too.
Is there any further discussion, questions on this Article 11? I see no one rising. So, we'll call this to a vote. It requires a two-thirds vote. So, I'll ask the tellers to go ahead and count this as it takes money, um, potentially from stabilization. So, two-thirds vote. All those in favor of Article 11, please raise your cards to be counted.
Twenty-three. Twenty-one.
Fifty-six. All those opposed to the article, please raise your cards. And hold them there.
Zero.
Thank you. Motion. I think we've lost microphones. Motion carries by unanimous. Oh, microphone's back. Thank you. Article 12.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $71,608 to pay costs of capital improvements and equipment and all costs incidental and related thereto as follows. The police department, two new police cruisers with equipment, less trade-ins, $70,000. Four radar units, one breathalyzer unit, one external defibrillator, two body cameras and one booking camera, $17,000. Police station roof repairs, $300,000. For the fire department, two defibrillators, monitors for the fire department, $50,000. Jaws of life for the fire department, $35,400. Highway department repairs to the salt shed of $30,000. Disposal of sweepings and beneficial use determination highway, otherwise known as BUD, $15,000. An 11-foot power angle plow for the highway department, $6,000. Miscellaneous equipment and technology for town network, $41,000. Seal coating and repairs to town offices and fire station parking lot, $25,000. Two radio boxes, highway barn and historic library are at those locations, $10,000. And repave the Ted Williams Camp driveway from Precinct Street to Bedford Street, $175,000 for a total of $774,400. And that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the selectmen is authorized to borrow $500,000 to pay cost of police station roof repairs, seal coating and repairs to town offices slash fire station parking lot, and to repave the Ted Williams Camp driveway from Precinct Street to Bedford Street, including payment of all costs incidental and related thereto under and pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 7, Paragraph 28 and Section 7, Paragraph 9 of the general laws or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. And one, two, $274,400 should be, shall be transferred from free cash and to authorize the Board of Selectmen and, or, and/or other, and other appropriate town officials to take such action as may be necessary to effectuate the purposes of this vote.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Motion, a second. Would you care to speak to this article?
Um, Mr. Moderator, this, um, as a result of a number of hours of reviewing capital requests from all departments, um, I think the totals were probably three or four times as much. We felt these were critical and necessary, um, and that, uh, it's, it's time to do some of these things, some of it's just replacing broken equipment or equipment that no longer works. Um, other than that, I've got no other comment.
All right, thank you. And if you could send a copy of the motion? Uh, does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
The Finance Committee did recommend approving this article, somewhat reluctant, a little bit reluctantly. We did vote three, four, and one abstention. I guess I'd have a hard time with the police station roof repairs, given the condition of the building and, um, lack of any movement to, any, any movement to do anything to replace it. Short of that, that was really our only reservation.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
Seems to me we could replace the police station for $300,000.
Would anyone care to speak to that?
Why, why does it, why does it cost $300,000 to replace the roof of the building of what size?
Is there a description of the work that would go along with the 300,000?
Uh, not right in front of me. I don't know if the building is, like, here. Hmm?
If, Nate, are you here? You can come down and speak to it, otherwise I would.
Nathan Darling, Building Commissioner, Lakeside Ave. It's not just a rip and re-roof, um, made up of twenty square roofing. It's three different rooftop assemblies that need to be torn off and right down to bare bones and rebuilt. We have a structural analysis that has been done on it. It's been deemed unsafe, so we have to do it.
Does that answer your question?
My question is, assuming we could decide to build another police building, how long could we limp along with the present building until we build a new one? Because it seems like a hell of a waste of money to throw $300,000 into a building that we know down the road we're not going to use anymore and is not going to have any other use.
Uh, anyone care to speak to that? First, I would say someone from the town, if you could speak to some of the planning or those issues that have been brought up.
I think that the, the issue of whether to replace a, whether it be the police station or town hall, I think that there's some capital items that have been put forward for many years. If one replaced the buildings that the, uh, we'll call it the managers of those departments wanted, the bill would be 27, over 27 million dollars. I think a typical police station, a new one is in the area of, uh, seven to nine million dollars for the size of the town of Lakeville. Uh, we, we've looked at it and, and gone through it. So, it's, it's a $300,000 repair, and if, and if we have Nate Darling, if I single him out as maintaining and repairing all our buildings, whether it be the town hall, the police station, or the highway, uh, bonds, uh, hopefully we won't have to spend long-term money. The roofs in the police station were added through the years, so there's substantially three different roofs that are there, and, uh, they were not done properly supported. So, that's why it has to be so much money, $300,000, but there's not a reason to think that the building couldn't be functional for, uh, many more years to come.
All right, um, I, actually, I think that's answered the question. I'm going to ask for the next person to speak, and then if you still have some more questions, come back.
Thank you. To you, Mr. Moderator. Uh, I personally find it an embarrassment that we ask our police personnel to work in that environment. I think we all, well, I'll speak for myself. I feel that it's unsafe. I question the liability that we put, uh, those officers in every day, and 300,000 would be a drop in the bucket compared to some potential liability claim that might ultimately cost the town a great deal of money. I, I don't want to spend good money after bad, but as far as I know, there's no proposal before the town yet for any new police station. I, I've heard lots of rumblings and so forth, and I, for one, would wholeheartedly support that. But I want those police officers and all of our town personnel to be safe in their environment. If 300,000 is going to do that for the police station, then I say, let's do it.
All right, thank you. Yes?
Final comment. I'm not opposed to, to, uh, maintaining the safety of our police officers, but I think this sends a message loud and clear to the town that we have to do something about that police station, because if we don't, we're just going to be throwing more good money after bad. This $300,000 is not going to carry us on for any long period of time. This is a short-term solution. We have to do something.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I see no one rising. This article does require two-thirds vote. I am going to ask the tellers to count, just in the essence of saving time, actually. If you could raise your cards if you are in favor of Article 12, please do so and be counted.
Twenty-one. Twenty.
Sixty-three? Fifty-three, thank you. All right, all those opposed to Article 12, please raise your cards.
One. Zero.
Thank you. I declare the motion passes by the two-thirds required. Article 13.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to postpone this matter indefinitely.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Would you care to speak to the postponement?
warrant for the sake of, uh, considering the, the purchase of a parcel of land located at 348 Bedford Street. That's the property that's adjacent to the town hall. The negotiation for that property has, has ended. Um, the property owners have decided to do something else with it, so we're just, um, we don't have a building to consider buying, so we need to postpone the matter indefinitely.
Thank you. And if we could have a copy of the motion? Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation on this motion?
The Finance Committee does recommend approving tableing this article.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I see no one rising. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. Any opposed to Article 13, please raise your card. I deem the vote passes unanimously. Article 14.
Yes, Mr. Mo, Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept under the provision of Mass. General Law, Chapter 90, Section 34, an apportionment in the amount of $374,530 or any other amount.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Would you care to speak to the article?
This is the state, uh, annual allotment that they give us to, uh, repair and update our town roads. Certainly, uh, there's been much in the news about Chapter 90 reimbursements to towns. Even at this level of $374,000, it's probably one-third of what our town and all towns and Commonwealth of Massachusetts need in order to, uh, properly repair and update their roads, but, uh, this is money, uh, given to us by the state.
Thank you.
That we've already paid through taxes.
Thank you. If you could pass the motion down. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Uh, Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee gladly recommends approving this article.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I see no one rising. This is a majority vote. All those in favor of Article 14, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. Any opposed to Article 14, please raise your cards. I see none. The vote passes unanimously. Article 15.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $50,000 for the purpose of adding to the stabilization fund pursuant to the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 5B.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Would you care to speak to the article?
Nope, it's, uh, exactly as it's described, a stabilization fund, funds when we do need them. Uh, I think we've, uh, after the transfer, the balance of this stabilization fund will be sitting at $844,202.86.
Thank you. If you could send a copy of the motion? And for the record, the Finance Committee approval?
Finance Committee does recommend approval.
Is there any further discussion? I see no one rising. This is a two-thirds vote, but I think I will try, uh, just doing a, a vote without counting first and see if that goes. So, all those in favor of Article 15, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. Any opposed to Article 15, please raise your card. I declare the vote passes unanimously. Thank you. Article 16.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the, the town vote to postpone this matter indefinitely.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Would you care to speak to the postponement of the article?
Originally, we thought we might be asking to add to the special stabilization fund for debt service and capital projects at this town meeting, but, uh, after Article 11, lease payment of $71,667 is withdrawn from this fund, the balance will be at $70,441. There was nothing left in the budget to, uh, ask the town to transfer into this particular stabilization fund.
All right, thank you. And if you could send a copy down? And for the record, the Finance Committee-
Recommends approving it.
Thank you. Any further discussion or questions? I see no one rising. This is a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. Any opposed to Article 16, please raise your cards. I see none. Vote passes unanimously. Article 17.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate $100,000 for the purpose of adding to the reserve fund.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Would you care to speak to this article?
Uh, the reserve fund is just the, they fund, uh, for the-
Reserve fund is just the, they fund for the current year's budget for any necessary payments of emergency costs that come up during the year, things that are unanticipated. That's the basis.
And the Finance Committee recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval.
Thank you. If you could pass a copy down. Any further discussion on this article? Seeing none. This is a majority vote. All those in favor of Article 17, please raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. Any opposed to Article 17, please raise your card. I see none. Vote passes unanimously. Article 18.
Bob Palucci, Lakeville Board of Health. I move the town vote to postpone this matter indefinitely.
Motion is second. Would you care to speak to it?
This has to do with the program we have that the town, through the Board of Health, lends money to homeowners in the town who can't afford to operate their septic if they're going to failure. No loans, I don't understand the accounting end of it, but no loans were paid off, and we have enough money to continue the program, so we don't need to raise any more money this year.
All right. Thank you. Could you bring a copy of the motion forward? And does the Finance Committee have a recommendation on the postponement?
The Finance Committee does recommend approval of postponing.
This is a majority vote. I see no other, yes, is there, oh, I'm sorry. No further discussions, so this is a majority vote. Please raise your cards, if you're in favor of Article 18. Thank you. You may put them down. Any opposed to Article 18? I see none. The motion passes unanimously. Article 19.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 64L, Section 2A, and to impose a local sales tax, or meal tax upon the sale of restaurant meals at .75% of grocery receipts.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Would you care to speak to this article?
Mr. Moderator, the legislature approved, gave towns and municipalities the ability or flexibility to enforce or impose, I guess, .75 additional tax on meals receipts, which is on top of the already 6.25% that the meals tax is charged when you do purchase foods, prepared foods and drink and the like. Spent a little time analyzing these numbers since it was enacted in 2009, and based on the Department of Revenue's estimates, the town of Lakeville would have collected and received about $50,000 to $55,000 a year in annual receipts if we did have this local tax. It would help fund some things. Been asked numerous times over the years about additional revenue streams or sources of revenue. This seemed one that initially wasn't thought to be that beneficial, though there weren't enough establishments in town to benefit from this. In fact, I counted 18 or 19. Another part of it, it's one of the few local taxes that we get to keep all of, such as the excise tax on the vehicles and real estate tax, personal property tax. Again, it's not, and it doesn't come totally from the town residents. It is anybody that buys food in town, whether they're from here or middle borough. The numbers kind of surprised me, quite frankly. About all I can sum up my background with this particular article.
Okay. And for the record, the Finance Committee recommendation?
Yes, the Finance Committee recommends approval.
And if you'd just send a copy of the motion. Yes, sir.
Mr. Moderator, I question that we have enough restaurants in town to make this a meaningful tax. I question how much it will cost to administer this and whether it is worth the cost of administration for the small amount that we would receive. I question whether or not we would be discouraging new enterprises from opening up restaurants in Lakeville as opposed to other places where they might so do. And I question how many people come from other towns to dine in Lakeville. I don't think this tax is worth the bother to the citizens of the town, to the officials of the town, and I think that we should defer this to sometime in the future when we have more of a culinary mecca.
Thank you.
Carl Purse, Hill Street. I actually question the whole concept of taxing more than we really need to, period. It is not economically productive. Even the small amount that it is, .75%, is nothing compared to the 2.5% that property taxes are, you get to automatically go up every year as a whole. But personally, I don't think the people need to be nickelled and dimed every time just to pay for something in the government. It's not necessarily, and even considering that small amount, you could easily open up a GoFundMe account, and you could probably pay for those little things. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion on this article? I see no one rising. This is a majority vote. All those in favor of Article 19, please raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. All those opposed to Article 19, please raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. I declare the article and motion fail by majority. Thank you. Article 20.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 22F, which allows the town to grant soldiers and sailors who are veterans and who by reason of injury received in service are paraplegics an exemption from property taxes.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you. Would you care to speak to the article?
Sure. This is an enactment of the Valor II Act, which allows, as stated, paraplegic veterans to have an exemption from property taxes.
Thank you. And if you could send a copy down, does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
The Finance Committee does recommend approving this article.
Thank you. Yes?
Carl Purse again, Hill Street. I commend the town for being able to provide, especially for those veterans who have paid the almost ultimate sacrifice for servicing our country. I did have a question in terms of just really the wording, whether maybe it's more defined within the Massachusetts General Laws or not. It's granting soldiers and sailors, does the law actually include pilots, Air Force, so on and so forth? And the other is regarding paraplegics, would not, should, and should that not include quadriplegics, since quadriplegics are even more impaired than paraplegics?
Thank you. I think we're looking into...
Turn this over to Town Council.
Yes. I think our Town Council is taking a look at your question.
Through you, Ms. Moderator?
Yes.
Okay. So the statute, sorry about that. Okay, so the statute says, "real estate of soldiers and sailors who are veterans," and let's see, the term veteran shall mean, we've got a page-long of definitions here of what constitutes a veteran. "Any person whose last discharge or release served in the Army, Navy, Marine Corps, Coast Guard, or Air Force of the United States." Okay. So that's the first question. And what was the second question? How you...
The second question was, would that not, or should that not include quadriplegics?
I don't believe that the statute defines the nature of the disability for the veteran, whether it's simply paraplegic or quadriplegic, or it uses the word paraplegic, but that word is not defined in the statute.
Is, I guess, the purpose of the question maybe, is the article as written or the motion as read appropriate for all to receive, or is it being exclusionary by being too many words possibly? I think maybe that's what's behind the question.
Mr. Moderator, through you. I think our intention is to adopt the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 22F. So however it's defined through the state is what we're accepting. So we're not necessarily clear on the definition of paraplegic and whether that encompasses quadriplegic, but we plan to enact this with the full ability of the statute behind us.
Okay. No, that would satisfy my question. If that is what it truly means, and it's from the Massachusetts General Law, then I have no problem. I just wanted to make sure there was clear what exactly we were doing. Thank you.
Through you, Ms. Moderator. Yeah, just to echo that. What we're doing is accepting a statute enacted by the legislature, so we don't have the ability to here tonight define particular terms. The state legislature has already defined those terms, and the town will apply the terms as already defined.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Very quickly. Dave Goodfellow, 29 Baker Lane. Has any other, do we have any kind of knowledge of any other community that's accepted this, and how are they implementing it? Because that 22F is specific to paraplegics, but if you read 22 in its entirety earlier, it relates to a percentage disability of the veteran. And so is it that we're omitting that because we're specifically adopting the 22F and nothing else in that? So is it that we've not looked at it completely? Or is it that other towns have adopted this specific statute and are able to implement it, I believe, the way that the spirit intends it to be implemented? Do we have any kind of knowledge of that?
All right, thank you. We'll look at that question.
Thank you, through you, Ms. Moderator. Yeah, I am aware that other towns, numerous other municipalities have accepted this particular provision of Section 22, and what I believe it does is that it allows an additional exemption that is not currently covered by the other provisions of Section 22.
Okay, thank you. Yes?
Mr. Moderator, I just wanted to point out that the choice we have here is either to accept this or not to accept it. We can't modify it. There is a provision in Massachusetts General Laws which we may or may not accept. I believe that it would be immoral of us not to accept it, and I therefore move the question.
Do I have a second on the moving of the question? Thank you. All those in favor of moving the question? Thank you. Put them down. Any opposed to moving the question? I see none. Moving the question passes unanimously. So Article 20. All those in favor, this is a majority vote. All those in favor of Article 20, please raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. Any opposed to Article 20, please raise your card. Motion passes unanimously. And finally, Article 21.
Mr. Moderator, to see if the town will vote to amend the town zoning bylaws by deleting Section 3.2.3 in its entirety and replacing it with the following. The Flood Plane Protection District is herein established as an overlay district. The district includes all special flood areas, flood hazard areas within the town of Lakeville designated as Zone A and AE on the Plymouth County Flood Insurance Rate Map, FIRM, issued by the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, for the administration of the National Flood Insurance Program, NFIP. The map panels of the Plymouth County FIRM that are wholly or partially within the town of Lakeville are panel numbers. I would entertain, no, I would entertain a motion for someone to wave me, right?
I would entertain the waving of the reading. All those in favor in waving the reading. Thank you. You may put the cards down. All those opposed? Motion to waive, passes unanimously.
Okay.
I wanted to see the sweat a little worse.
You knew where I was going with that. Okay. So let me, to finish, okay, it's dated July 16, 2015. The exact boundaries of the district may be defined by the 100-year base flood elevation shown on the FIRM and further defined by the Plymouth County Flood Insurance Study, FIS, report dated July 16, 2015. The FIRM and FIS report are incorporated herein by reference and are on file with the town clerk.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second? Motion is second. Would you care to speak to it?
Our illustrious building inspector, Mr. Darling, had compiled this list, which we've known of, but he's got a nice handy in front of me here, that no resident, if this does not pass, no resident will be able to purchase flood insurance policy. The existing flood insurance policies will not be renewed. No federal grants or loans for development may be made in identified flood hazard areas under programs administered by federal agencies. No federal disaster assistance may be provided to repair insurable buildings located in the identified flood hazard areas for damage caused by a flood. No federal mortgage, insurance, or loan guarantees may be provided in identified flood hazard areas. This includes policies written by FHA, VA, and others. Federally insured or regulated lending institutions, such as banks and credit unions, must notify applicants seeking loans for insurable buildings in flood hazard areas that there is a flood hazard and that the property is not eligible for federal disaster relief. So what the federal government did was they rewrote the Flood Plane District, and they handed it to us, and we have to approve the Flood Plane District and pass it at a town meeting, or the insurance will not be covered. The Planning Board voted to pass it on to the town meeting because we understand the ramifications if we don't.
Thank you. And does the Planning Board have a recommendation?
Unanimous.
Unanimous, thank you. And while you're bringing the copy, does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
We do recommend approval.
I think you were first down there. Go ahead.
Hi, John Gregory, Bartelly Road. I just have a question about the date for these panels, July 16, 2015. We're not quite there yet. Are they dated in advance, or is it a typo?
Could anyone answer that? The question is, the motion as read and as written uses a date of flood panels of July 16, 2015.
Zink, Anaconda Drive. I worked on this a little bit. What, they actually issued those maps a little bit over a year ago, and they've been taking them through their paces. I mean, they held public meetings to show them and stuff like that. They only actually went into, go into effect in some future date back then. And their requirements were that all of the towns that were going to accept them, you know, they wanted to have them accepted before they went into effect. They fully know this. The town clerk has a whole bunch of things that she has to do to them over the next couple of weeks. So, you know, it's the federal. They have, they gave us a specific set of numbers. That's the right date, the effective date. It doesn't mean the land moved. The land hasn't moved for hundreds of, you know, I mean, for a very long time, and it just the lines on the map that moved and a date in the lower corner. It's very, very, and the movement was very small.
So it's appropriate in your...
It's absolutely correct.
To, because the maps actually will have a physical date printed on them of July 16...
And they are only identified by the date because everything else looks the same, you know, from iteration to iteration.
Okay.
It's hard to find, but it's absolutely correct.
Mr. Moderator, question I have is, if we approve this article, and I'm not suggesting that we ought not to approve it, but if we approve this article, are we not designating the authority of this meeting to whoever is executing or enunciating that report on July 15, 2015? What's the legality of that?
Could you restate the question, and maybe Town Council can offer opinion, but I'm not, personally, I'm not quite sure what the question is.
If we vote to approve this, aren't we giving authority to another body to act on our behalf? Aren't we delegating our authority to whoever does this report? The report hasn't been done yet. So how can we...
What I think, and just off the, the first sentence of the article is, "To amend the town's zoning bylaws by deleting a section and replacing a section." So I think what this body is doing, maybe to answer your question, is simply changing zoning laws referencing the new maps.
That aren't out yet.
That are out with a date that is in the future. We have to vote for it before we can see what's in it.
Smells funny.
I think unfortunately, that's our choice, is either to not vote for...
No, I understand that. Well, okay. It still smells funny.
Thank you.
Just to clarify that, all the documents are already out and have been reviewed, so there was a review process for anybody to speak to or have questions about. But the documents are already out and have been approved.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? I see no one rising. This requires a two-thirds vote. I will attempt to get a sense of the audience by asking you to raise your cards if you're in favor of Article 21. Thank you. You may put your cards down. Any opposed to Article 21, please raise your card. I see none. The vote passes unanimously. With that, we are complete. I would ask you to put any unused cards in the blue box on your way out, and it would entertain a motion to dissolve.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.